Somebody else is on.
Well, that's a couple.
It is, it's a hit.
We got fifteen hundred.
You ready?
I can't wait.
Yes, this is the last thing.
That's pretty funny.
At first I thought you'd bet.
Yeah, we don't want to get into which by the way.
We don't own that world.
So this right now is.
Are you going, are you going to carry me?
Holy word.
It'd be like last year, you show up at like eight, nine o'clock in the morning.
All the words you've got to spend.
What?
This guy over here, this was there, he kind of like, but she was just like, here's my.
Please rise with the flag and invocation and remain standing, please.
But please, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, tomorrow is the first beginning of school. Bless our school board members, our administrators, all the employees in the various positions, our teachers, especially our children. Give them the proper guidance so they may establish a footprint that would be beneficial to their future. Give them a guiding light, establish a good working relationship and a safe environment. Bless all that are concerned with the welfare of our children. Amen.
At this point, I would like to observe a moment of silence for Anne Cardinelli, who passed away just a week or so ago. She had been a member of the planning commission for quite some time, very dedicated to the planning commission, and I think a moment of silence is needed this time.
Clerk Colerole.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alman Lincoln.
Here.
Alman Sahaski.
Here.
Alman Weston.
Here.
Alman Sherman.
Here.
Alman Thompson.
Here.
Alman Woodward.
Here.
Attorney David Hawthorne.
Here.
Our present, your honor.
Thank you. First item.
Resolve the minutes of the council meeting held on August 10th, 2000, and August 15th, 2000 are hereby approved.
Motion?
I move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve the clerk's report for June 2000, the amount of $3,916.69. In July 2000, the amount of $5,958.48 are hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that pursuant to requirements of the New York State Department of Health, the common council hereby adopts the NELAC being the National Environmental Laboratory Standards as per attached.
Is there a motion?
All in favor?
Second.
Discussion? Just to let everybody know, these are standards that are set for our laboratory at our wastewater treatment plant. And they are required by the New York State Department of Health. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Now we have the discussion.
With us tonight, we have a lady that has put in an awful lot of time with our community task force. I know that because I participate with the task force. This started out as the task force against school terrorism or terrorism of schools. And we've gone past that, and now it's just a community task force that is working to try to improve the quality of life within our community. Jerry Hogan has put in uncounted hours, and I appreciate her involvement very much, and she would like to bring the council up to date on what is going on with the task force. Jerry?
I want to thank you for giving this time to talk about the task force. And yes, Mike has worked with us. The level of enthusiasm on the task force still remains high. We've had public forums, we've gathered input, we've made recommendations to the school district, to the city, to parents, and we've had some activities. We have prayed now at front of the high school. The first year, right after all the bomb scares, we prayed for peace. Last year, we prayed for, shared our hopes and dreams for the school year, and this year, we're going to pray for family diversity in our community, celebrate families. This is going to be an interfaith prayer day. I know a lot of you are going to be somewhere else at another event Sunday. I'm well aware of that. But if you could take a few minutes and come over and just spend a few minutes, it's going to be at J. Ray Bodley at three o'clock. We have Pastor David Hanson from the Syracuse, well, actually, it's the Interreligious Council Center of New York that's going to come. So we hope it's an opportunity for everybody. We've had some activities. We have with us tonight some of our other members. Sandy Weston's here, she's a parent, one of the grandparents. We have Terry Bennett, who does our publicity. We have Dana Smith from the fire department, and we have a couple of our students, Mitch Orkus and Amanda Griffin. Dana has a T-shirt he's going to show us that we're going to sell with our logo on it. It's kind of neat. The kids at J. Ray Bodley, one of the technology class, designed the logo.
Play to the camp.
We also have produced three newsletters. This is the last one. The city was very gracious today to help us with photocopying, and I thank you for that. The level of enthusiasm has been wonderful, and everybody cooperating has been just outstanding. When you get the mayor and the superintendent of schools and parents and teachers and clergy, the whole gamut of the community working together, I just think it's a really good, good thing for the community. Jackie Stewart, the principal of high school, told me that the school was a much friendlier place last year. And Respect Week is September 10th to 16th, and I hope you all help us reserve, observe it. And all the schools in the city are going to have activities centered around respect and responsibility. So I think that's pretty interesting. We have green ribbons. We've made about 4,000 green ribbons. They're coming out like shelling peas. Everywhere I look, there's green ribbons around my house. We had students at my house one day and had a pizza party, and we made green ribbons. But a lot of the members have taken ribbons home, and we've cut them up and pinned them on papers. And the green ribbons are for all the students, fourth grade and up, through, fourth grade right through high school. And we're going to, tomorrow, first day of school, we're going to go around so that the staff of the schools can get them out. We also have newsletters, and the students are going to come, if you don't mind, come through and give you all a couple of green ribbons and a newsletter. And then I want to read something I wrote in the newsletter. I hope you'll read the newsletter and wear the green ribbons and show up for a minute Sunday and.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Be respectful now and forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The T-shirts are $10, so if anybody wants to order one, we'll be glad to take your order.
Thanks, Josh.
We have a really wonderful bunch of students that work with us. We had a car wash a couple of weeks ago. It was a lot of fun. But the kids are just really dedicated, and they're super kids. And we have so many good kids in the city of Fulton, really super kids. Can I draw your attention to the front page, the article "Family and Familism"? I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but "I decided to look up family in the dictionary and ran across the word 'familism,' which is described as a pattern of social structure in which the family unit and strong family feeling occupy a position of great importance. While you're digesting what that means, let's examine what a family is. A family is defined as all the people living in the same household, but we all know that it's much more than that. A family is a circle of close family members and intimate friends. A family is where we come from and how we feel about ourselves. It's where we get our traditions, social values, morals, and where we go to get help, love, and support, good times and a bad. Every one of us, no matter our age, needs a family circle of loved ones to rely on. Senior citizens need someone to share their wisdom with to grow peacefully. Grown-ups need older adults to learn from and have a good example to follow. Children need grown-ups to guide and teach them and to show them how to respect their family, themselves, and others. Our community is a family unit, too. It's where we live and how we get along with and take care of one another. But not all families look alike, think alike, and act alike, nor should they. There are many different kinds of people, colors, backgrounds, and religious beliefs that make up a community like ours. Come to think about it, familism has found its meaning here in Fulton where it thrives, simply because family life in our community is regarded as most valued and sacred." Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you so very much for everything that you have done for the Fulton family.
I just, of course, I'd like to add something if I could. I am certainly very familiar with the community task force. One, having attended two or three meetings, and also living with one of the members of the community task force, I have the opportunity to see the newsletter being worked on and the numerous phone calls and the meetings that are attended by these members. And I've never seen a group that has been so enthusiastic and so interested in what is good for our community. So I can remember when the community task force first started, that my impression at that time was that this would be something that would carry on and would go far beyond what their original goals were. And I, with the people that are on this task force, they can instantly contact each other and are effective in all ways of life. The people that are on this committee are involved in an awful lot of different areas of the community, and I can see them working on different projects, and they're very effective. And I, for one, and of course, I think the council is very supportive, and this is certainly good for our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to mention one thing. As a teacher at J. Ray Bodley High School, I would like to thank everyone working on the task force. I know the, all the good things that have been done at the high school level and the levels below. And I also want to make note that I want to thank Jerry, and I don't know how many people know this, but Jerry received a prestigious award from the Teachers Association, the Apple Award. So, thank you, Jerry.
Well, that's great. I will be out of town, but I will try to be back by three o'clock on Sunday to stop over, and I encourage all the council members if they can to do that also. And I would like to order a T-shirt, extra large.
Are you buying for the council, Mayor?
Just one.
Oh, come on. Be kind.
I would like to order one, too, of course.
If you minds to put me down there, too.
I think we'll go right down the line. John, are you next?
Yeah, yeah. Extra large.
Extra large.
They don't shrink, do they?
I like a fit. I wear an extra large, which I like a fit, so can't go wrong with an extra large, right?
That's right.
Thank you.
Since I'm a.
They're $10 each.
I'm the most recently married, so I guess I'm the only one thinking about my wife. I'll take two. And she's pregnant, so make them both extra large.
Okay, thank you very much.
What salesman, huh?
Right. You've got a timing, it's all timing.
It's all timing, right. A captive audience.
But I think the mayor's picking up the tab.
That's what I heard him say.
Did you hear that?
I second it.
Oh, I didn't hear a vote. We have one other item under discussion that came in late, didn't make it to the agenda. Mr. Crook, that is the item on West 7th Street. Do you want to discuss that before we do the resolution?
We have a developer who wants to build some homes on West 7th Street, and presently we do not have sewer there, sanitary sewer. And one of the things, being an existing street, that we wanted to look at what the price would be to put a sewer line down there and promote some growth in our city.
Is this going to require water, too?
Yes.
So it'll be water and sanitary sewer?
The expensive portion of that is the sanitary sewer.
And that would be from Walrath?
It would be from Walrath to Batavia Ave. on West 7th Street North. It's already an existing street, which does not have sewer at this time. It's my understanding from reading the charter that no one could beat a septic system within the city limits, so therefore, it was my understanding from reading that section of the charter that we had to provide a line for people to hook into at their expense from the road to the house, where it would be their expense, right, where it would be their expense from the house to tie into us at the road.
The developer will be adding or extending streets within the city, where it would be his responsibility to put the water and sewer in. But this is an existing street, and we wanted to look at what it would take to put water and sewer on an existing street.
On the existing street.
There's also land on the east side of that street that in the future could be developed also.
Some of the last developable land in the city.
Yes.
Really? Okay, thank you.
I would ask the city attorney's interpretation of that section of the charter, if it indeed is our, the city's responsibility as you interpret it?
I believe it is, Bob. I think certainly if I own that land and there's no sewer water there, but everywhere else in the city there's sewer water along the public streets, I think I have a good argument that the city's responsible to provide it. Our charter doesn't necessarily say that, but it doesn't say the opposite either. It's pretty much silent on that issue. So I think there's a good argument for that. As long as the developer understands that any other land, any other roads that may end up being built as part of this tract of land, the city isn't going to be responsible to provide the water and sewer through those. I think that legally, they have a good argument that we need to provide at least up to his land.
I'm just concerned if there's any other precedents where the same type of situations existed and how it was handled at that time. And I can understand, like, new development, and then if you're developing new streets, then that probably would be a different situation.
That's what we've had in the past, where they've put in streets, and the developer has had to do that. We have another situation, we have another piece of land up on 41 that does not, on the west side of 41, that does not have water and sewer to it at this time. And if that's going to be developed, probably we are going to have to.
Do the same thing.
Make arrangements to do the same thing there.
Okay.
You have a resolution?
Resolve that John Crook, the executive assistant to the mayor, is hereby authorized and directed to prepare specifications and approximate cost of running a sewer line on West 7th Street between Walrath Street and Batavia Avenue.
I'll move it.
Do you want to also add in that the water, so it's all encompassing?
Yeah.
A water main and a sewer?
Okay.
Joe, can you read that again? I just want to make sure I understand what it is we're voting on here.
Resolve that John Crook, the executive assistant to the mayor, is hereby authorized and directed to prepare specifications and approximate cost of running a water main and a sewer line on West 7th Street between Walrath Street and Batavia Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion, your honor?
We will second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council? Does anyone on the council have any business to bring before the council?
Yes, Mayor, if I could have some time, please. After the press released the segment on the Van Buren Park down to the Sixth Ward, Alderman Woodward's award, I've had a lot of calls and people that I've seen on the street mentioning the fact that that is a super idea. And they were pleased about the fact that it's not just going to be for children or young adults, that it's going to be a multi-complex that even the elderly could use. So it's going to encompass a lot of things, and they're pretty positive on this. So the big thing is, if we could get that money and get this thing done, that would be a big plus.
The grant request has been completed and submitted. Yes?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a couple of things. One, the park signs have been put up in eight of our parks in the city. Foster Park, Hewlett Park, John Lincoln Park, Patrick Park, Swigill Falls Park, Recreation Park, Rowley Beach Park, and Van Buren Park. These signs indicate the names of the parks, and there is a couple of lines underneath the signs that indicate why they're named those names. There also will be added to the signs, the adoptive park signs, those are for the organizations that have worked on the parks. And also, there's other signs that will be going up. There will be a sign at Hewlett Park, which is recognizing C. V. Abbott Playground. We have a sign that will be going up at Indian Point Landing, and there's signs going up at the canal landing area, the marine area. So it will be pretty well signed out by the time we get these up.
Very good. Thank you for all the work you did on that.
It was a pleasure. Just got one more thing, and this is a little bit of a sadness note. Last Tuesday, August 29th, at 1:40 PM, Fulton lost one of its senior, senior citizens, Marcello Fraley, who lives at West 1st Street. With 39 days to go to reach the age of 105, passed away. When she was 100 years old, Mayor Don Bullard, by proclamation, recognized this wonderful lady attaining the age of 100. At 104, as she entered her third century, on January 15th of the year 2000, Mayor Mike Stafford issued a proclamation recognizing her living through three generations, through three centuries. The mayor, myself, Sandy, and a number of people have been in touch with Marcello through the last few years. We went over and issued the proclamation to her in person. It was an experience that Sandy and I will never forget. She was extremely touched by the fact that the mayor took the time to go over there and present that proclamation to her. She mentioned at the time to all of us, she said, "I've never done anything," you know? And we said, "You know, you've lived a wonderful life, you've lived..."
Alderman Woodworks Award, I've had a lot of calls and people that I've seen on the street mentioning the fact that that is a super idea. And they were pleased about the fact that it's not just going to be for children or young adults, that it's going to be a multi-complex that even the elderly could use. So it's going to encompass a lot of things, and they're pretty positive on this. So the big thing is, if we could get that money and get this thing done, that would be a big plus.
The grant request has been completed and submitted. Yes?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a couple of things. One, the park signs have been put up in eight of our parks in the city. Foster Park, Hewlett Park, John Lincoln Park, Patrick Park, Oswego Falls Park, Recreation Park, Rowley Beach Park, and Van Buren Park. These signs indicate the names of the parks, and there is a couple of lines underneath the signs that indicate why they're named those names. There also will be added to the signs, the adoptive park signs, those are for the organizations that have worked on the parks. And also, there's other signs that will be going up. There will be a sign at Hewlett Park, which is recognizing C.B. Abbott Playground. We have a sign that will be going up at Indian Point Landing. And there's signs going up at the canal landing area, the marine area. So we'll be pretty well signed out by the time we get these up.
Very good. Thank you for all the work you did on that.
Well, it was a pleasure. Just got one more thing, and this is a little bit of a sadness note. Last Tuesday, August 29th, at 1:40 PM, Fulton lost one of its senior, senior citizens. Marcella Frauley, who lives at West First Street, with thirty-nine days to go to reach the age of a hundred and five, passed away. When she was a hundred years old, Mayor Don Bullard, by proclamation, recognized this wonderful lady attaining the age of a hundred. At a hundred and four, as she entered her third century, on January 15th of the year 2000, Mayor Mike Stafford issued a proclamation recognizing her living through three generations, through three centuries. The mayor, myself, Sandy, and a number of people have been in touch with Marcella through the last few years. We went over and issued the proclamation to her in person. It was an experience that Sandy and I will never forget. She was extremely touched by the fact that the mayor took the time to go over there and present that proclamation to her. She mentioned at the time to all of us, she said, "I've never done anything," you know? And we said, "You know, you've lived a wonderful life, you've lived, you've been a kind of an inspiration to all of us." I mean, she's lived in the same area for over a hundred years. So it was truly a loss, and I think that we thank Marcella for all the years that she's lived in Fulton, and for all the experience that she gave to us and the inspiration. So I think that we have lost one of our treasures, but it was something that those of us that reached out to her and talked to her in the last few years will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I second that wholeheartedly. She was a special lady. Joe, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I hate to follow that, it was something that I want to discuss, but I had a call Friday night, and I think this is something we've got to look at. I talked to a couple of Alderman before the meeting. And what had happened was, one of our infamous tenants had moved out of their property late Thursday evening, like, two o'clock in the morning. Did a lot of damage, property damage to the unit they were living in. Hauled everything to the curb, and it was loaded with cockroaches. The call I get is from an upset, irate neighbor with cockroaches approaching their property. They're out there, by the time I had gotten there, they were with brooms and everything else, stomping on them, it was a mess. And I was pretty ticked off about it. And I think my problem right now is, I don't think the city has anything set up to really come down and start punishing this type of activity. This goes on day after day in the city. It's a situation that I feel should be illegal dumping. I don't care where it happened, I don't care about the landlord being held responsible, I care about the person doing it being held responsible, showing up here in front of a judge and paying a penalty. And that's the only way we're going to curb that type of situation. We're not going to allow, we should not allow, people living in the city to just dump their trash, litter in the city, and then walk away from it, clapping their hands and thinking it's funny. The party in Fulton has got to stop. And I'll tell you right now, we're going to have, I'm going to call Legislative Committee Meeting on this, because I'm ticked off. The landlord called me up, she doesn't, she's not even really aware of who was living in the property, because the original tenant had moved out, and she had, like, sublet it to somebody else who had lived there for a month, month and a half, without, I don't even know if they were paying rent. So they were in the process of being evicted. And, you know, in turn, turn around and do damage. Now, it's in a nice neighborhood. The house itself is not a bad house. It was over on Pratt Street. I think that there were calls here to your office Friday. I had heard about it, but wasn't aware of what the names were, who was involved. And then I had heard about it Friday night and went over there right after the phone call to see it for myself. It's just a total disregard for our neighborhood and disregard for the community, and I think it's time that this crap stops. I'm sick and tired of seeing, literally, cockroaches and having complaints about cockroaches because people can't live clean. And I feel, get them in front of a judge and make them pay fines. If they don't want to pay fines, then give them community service, they're going to start putting back into the community what they're taking out of it.
You're going to bring this before the legislative?
Absolutely. The party is going to stop. It's over, as far as I'm concerned. That is not going to be tolerated in this city.
Understandably.
Your Honor, they have a parcel of land in the Sixth Ward that a person was interested in buying. David Hawthorne did an abstract on it. It's a piece of wooded property, and currently, it says on our map here, seventeen point four nine acres. The city at one time, years ago, had a teepee burner at the top of this, mostly hill, and it's landlocked. I think, I want to put it up for public sale. There may be some interest from the neighbors, but the person that was interested in this wanted to buy a lot that's on that street. This shows Northeast Street here, it's actually White Avenue. This is Northeast, it was what, it was a paper street years ago. And if no one bids against him, then he won't buy this, because it's not big enough for him to build it. Okay? And really, now, we couldn't get to it unless we extended Clark Street, because we own, I think, well, I don't know, the city doesn't own this over here. It's bordered by Valney, it's bordered by Penn Central Railroad, and it's bordered by about five private lots on one side and a private lot on the other side. We spent around fifteen hundred dollars doing the abstract. I'm not sure what to put on for a minimum bid. John Crook and I talked about, we thought five thousand dollars. And now, how we arrived at that, it was, if there's interest and somebody wants it, they'll pay for it. Spent off the tax rolls for a number of years. And, yeah. This is up over the hill.
And this would be done?
See, these are all private, you know? It's private.
I don't think that's a lot of land.
Yeah. No, actually, I don't know.
This is an appraisal.
This percentage of the job is like that.
It's all wood.
It's landlocked.
And over here, at the top, there's a teepee burner, I just talked about. There's no road there. There's no road there either. There's an access road for utility there, that's it. So the one that's interesting, we have to buy this piece, he would use this. And he's not going to buy this unless he can get that, because he can't, there's a crick along there, too.
So you are, you going to a sealed bid?
Well, actually, I'd like a public bid. You know, if there's, if there's.
The public auction can either be by sealed bid or by open bidding.
I think you're better off with the open bid, let the public know what they're bidding. That's just my opinion.
It's your choice.
This gentleman has waited, he's had an interest all summer with it, but we hit a lot of snags. I wanted to be sure that no one would go in there and build duplexes, because we don't, my feelings, I don't want no more rental units. He's probably got room for a few single families in here, and unless he can hang them from the top of that hill, I can't imagine him building too far up on that hill. That hill is like this.
Great steep.
Yeah. So really, I think in order for even, for him to buy this lot down here and build, he'd need some of that land. And that would give these other people that own lots the opportunity to bid on it, and the price might go up. In any event, we'll put it back on the tax rolls.
And that's R-1A, so it's only a single-family residential.
Yeah, it's R-1A, and he has, Mrs. Ferens here tonight representing him, she's a real estate agent. I'll give her a copy, and anyone else who wants a copy of what can be built on there, but it's basically single-family homes, nothing, no duplexes, no, you know?
We're just checking to see what date we need to.
How long we have to advertise it? Meanwhile, I'll let the neighbors down in that area be aware, in case they want to bid on it.
We could do it the first meeting, and.
So we have to go to October?
Which is what, the second?
Third. As soon as we can do it, it's the third of October, at the council meeting.
That'd be fine. I mean, he's waited all summer, and there's been a lot of things that we had to check out. At one time, this was part of the Belgium tract, and I was told years ago that was a park. Even though it was never used for that, it was dedicated for park. And anything dedicated for a park, the only way you can get rid of it is dedicate more land for a park, but it turns out, from the research, that it wasn't. So then David did a, Hawthorne did a abstract on it to make sure that was actually all of ours, because at one time, we rented some of that property from a person in Valney for the teepee burner for the hundred-year lease. So that's all done. So I think now, if guys waited long enough, we'll try to.
So your resolution is that you would like to have a public auction of this piece of property?
Yep.
On October 3rd, at the common council meeting, October 3rd, on this piece of property that's approximately seventeen?
Seventeen point four nine.
Seventeen point.
I can't see the lot number on it, but when Joe does the resolution, when he advertises, you can get it off.
We'll do that on the map, yes. We'll do that.
Ron Edick knows all about it, he can tell you where it is.
So we got a minimum bid of five thousand dollars?
If that suits the council. I think that you'd have to look at the lot, and it sounds like a lot of acres, but when you go and look at it, it's not all usable.
Not that much is usable.
Right.
Do you also want a hundred-dollar increments on the bids?
Could I do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there anything else we need in the bid? We really have a resolution.
That's the deal.
Okay, we have a resolution. Do it, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anything else for the council?
No, I'm done.
With that in mind, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss impending litigation.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Spahn, I'm the chief of police for the City of Fulton, and the organizer of tonight's forum on behalf of the Fulton Community Task Force. Tonight's topic, Rights and Responsibilities of Parents and Children, was discussed in some detail last year as a result of the series of bomb threats that plagued our schools, both here in Fulton and in several other areas. In our discussions, it was very apparent to us that there were some misconceptions about how police, schools, and the courts handle matters involving discipline. There were also misunderstandings about law, how the courts worked, and how penalties and sentences were decided, and other factors as well. All of these issues seem to point to one central theme, constitutional law, or in other words, rights. But for every individual right and freedom that we have, there are also responsibilities. None of us can abuse a right to the extent that it interferes with the rights of others. That brings us to our forum tonight. We'd invited, along with our distinguished guests of panelists tonight, we invited Assemblywoman Fran Sullivan, Senator Chuck Schumer, Senator Jim Wright, and Lieutenant Governor Mary Donahue. They were all unable to attend tonight, but they do pass on their regrets and best wishes. In addition, our chair lady, Jerry Hogan, received a special letter from the First Lady. The First Lady was invited by some of our school board members at a recent meeting in Albany, and I would like to share that letter with you now. Dear friends, I am pleased to have this opportunity to send greetings to each of you attending the forum of the Community Task Force of Fulton, New York, Laws, Rights, and Responsibilities of Parents and Children. A nation's greatest resource is its people, especially its children. I commend each of you gathered today for joining the movement to stop the violence and to create safe schools where all children are ready and able to learn. In October 1998, the President and I hosted a White House conference on school safety, at which we brought together parents, law enforcement officials, religious leaders, elected officeholders, child advocates, and others who have a direct stake in contributing to the safety and well-being of our children. As you are doing today, we came together to recognize that no community can afford to think it is immune from what happens in the larger society. Together, we have to do a better job of creating more psychological counseling resources and other support services for teachers and students. We also have to be willing to stand up and talk about the culture of violence that infects the lives of our children. Parents also have to be equipped and empowered to feel that they have more responsibility and authority in the lives of their children. We owe it to ourselves, our children, and society to make sure that we adopt whatever strategy it takes, wiping out gun violence, reaching our kids with counseling, standing up against the culture of violence, so that all of our nation's children can make the most of their God-given promise. I encourage you, I encourage your continued commitment to this important cause. Please accept my best wishes for a productive and informative forum. Sincerely yours, Hillary Rodham Clinton. Last September, the Community Task Force participated in a live televised discussion on safety in our schools. That discussion involved representatives from Syracuse area schools, Senator Chuck Schumer, and of course, the Fulton Community Task Force. Jeff Glor hosted the Fulton event, and when the task force planned tonight's event, we asked Jeff if he would facilitate this forum for us, and he very willingly accepted. Tonight is Jeff's second guest spot in Fulton in 24 hours, having hosted our special awards ceremony for us at City Hall last night. On behalf of the task force, I would like to thank Jeff for helping us as we discuss rights and responsibilities of parents and children in our society, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you Jeff Glor. Jeff?
Let me give me a pat on the back at the end of the evening, I managed not to trip on this thing. There's a reason why Mark went first tonight. If anybody was there last night, and you had the pleasure of missing something, it was very embarrassing for me, I forgot to introduce him, so. We do things differently now, when I come to these things. First of all, I want to thank Mark for inviting me this evening. Truly a great pleasure to come up here and be part of these events. I've had a chance to come up here a few times before. And when I say this, I mean it. There truly is no other group that I know of in central New York, upstate New York, or New York State for that matter, like the Fulton Community Task Force. I mean, the work that is done here, and has been done here, and will continue to be done here, is extraordinary. And the people involved, that it is so comprehensive. So I congratulate all of you, because by coming tonight, you really are part of that. That said, we are going to try to move as expeditiously as possible this evening. I know that Bruce Willis is guest starring in a new episode of Friends tonight, and everybody wants to get back for that one. Let me introduce our panelists this evening, and I'm going to go right down the list that I have here, this may not be the order they're seated in, in fact, I know it's not. The Honorable David J. Roman, Oswego County Family Court Judge.
Evening, everyone.
The Honorable Spencer Luddington, City Court Judge, City of Fulton. Donald H. Dodd, from the Oswego County DA's office. Bill Lynch, who is the Executive Director of Instruction and Assessment at Fulton Schools. Richard C. Mitchell, who is with the Oswego County Attorney's Office. And finally, Michael Richmond, who is a probation officer with the Oswego County Probation Department. Now that I've introduced the panelists, what I would like to do before we go into a few ground rules about this evening, is have them say a few words about why they're here and how they feel about our topic, and that is, parents and children's rights and responsibilities when it comes to some of the issues that we are talking about. So, without further ado, let me introduce again the Honorable David J. Roman.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the Fulton Task Force for inviting me here this evening, together with all of my colleagues, most of whom I work with closely and on a very regular basis. I had the opportunity to participate last September, when the task force met over at the Education Center, and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to all begin a dialogue. And at the time, I tried to make clear that family court, as much of a mystery as it is, and as much of a misnomer as it may be, is an open court. And what that means is that the best way, I think, any or all of you can learn about family court is to take the time to come over to our facility at 39 Churchill Road at the Public Safety Center. We're in session day in and day out. We do literally thousands of cases a year that include custody and visitation issues, that include neglect and abuse, that include juvenile delinquency, and persons in need of supervision, and of course, those are the type cases that we're primarily focused on this evening. What I would try to emphasize to everyone is to understand the limitations, the practical limitations, of what we can do in family court. Our primary purpose is to be rehabilitative in nature. In other words, if a child who appears in our court is less than sixteen and has allegedly done something wrong, then it's our purpose, not necessarily to be punitive in nature, as much as to be rehabilitative. If we can turn these kids around and work together with a host of service providers, then hopefully they learn from their experiences, and they go forward and avoid the recidivism that leads them into the adult criminal system that they would face at age sixteen. But when we look at the topic of parental responsibility, that's where the community comes in, that's where the family comes in, that's where the parents come in, and that's where this type organization is so important, because with the limitations that we face, we have to rely on the families, we have to rely on the parents to do their jobs. If the parents are setting the proper example, if they are setting the ground... If the parents are setting the proper example, if they are setting the ground rules, if they're working with the service providers, whether it be in the school context, or with the Department of Social Services, or with probation, or with any other host of community agencies, then hopefully these children do not necessarily end up entrenched in the system. And all too often, I find, and I've been doing this job for 12 years now, I've been working in the family court system one way or another for a quarter century, I find that it's too easy for parents to avoid their responsibilities. And oftentimes, the problems that come before us are generational, generational in nature. We need the families to work together with the service providers and shoulder their fair share of the responsibility in setting their own children in the right direction.
Judge, thank you. Next person who's going to make some introductory remarks here is another judge, whose courtroom I've actually been in before, but to cover cases, don't get worried here. The Honorable Spencer Luddington, City Court Judge, city of Fulton. Judge?
Thank you. I too want to thank the Fulton Task Force for the invitation. I think, to echo Judge Roman's comments about a dialogue, I think critically important to the, our American system and the American justice system, is to have a dialogue, and I think that there can't be a more appropriate current topic as rights and responsibilities. Yesterday, in the Senate, United States Senate, the debate was whether or not to add an additional amendment to the Constitution, giving victims the rights to be appear at sentencing of defendants. And the debate was whether or not to assert or amend the Constitution to add that additional right. Yesterday, the Supreme Court heard arguments as to whether or not unborn child has any particular rights, and that case will be decided in the near future. So I think it's important that this is an ongoing debate, and I think it's in the spirit of the Constitution that our forefathers created some 200 years ago, and it's still alive and well today. In Fulton City Court, quite regularly, we deal with a number of defendants' rights, and I'm obligated under the law to afford the defendants those rights, and of course, we're very familiar with many of them, and they're enumerated in the Bill of Rights, the first, generally considered the first 10 amendments of our Constitution: the right to freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of press, freedom of unreasonable searches and seizures, and a right to a speedy and fair and public trial, to name just a few. However, I think it's more important than just rights, that along with these rights, there must be some requirement that these rights are exercised in a reasonable and responsible manner so as to protect the rights of the people. And of course, I think this is necessary for an orderly and free society. And when I was asked by Mark, Chief Spahn rather, to address the task force and the community, I really wasn't sure where to start, and so I dug out some old history books, and what really jumped out at me, and I thought was pretty current topic, although written some 200 years ago, was really the preamble to our Constitution, which really kind of sets forth what I believe are our rights and responsibilities. And it starts out as "we, the people," and of course, it's a community effort, and it's "we, the people," and it's not "the government shall." And so I think that the forefathers felt that that was something that should be considered when we created our union, and it should be a community effort. In order to form a more perfect union, and that, again, is an attempt, an optimistic attempt, to give each other respect, which I think is an important aspect of what a community is, and to establish justice. And that, of course, is a reference to the rights of the individual. Ensure domestic tranquility. Well, in order to ensure domestic tranquility, people need to be responsible and respectful to those people around them. To promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. And that, I believe, really hits the nail on the head: to secure the blessings of such a liberty, we must respect one another. And that's really what I think the character of the Constitution might be, and I think what might be an important character of what the community should strive for, and perhaps we should attempt to do so in our everyday interactions with each other. And I really think that this character is developed in our youth, and I think that the family unit is the most critical element to procure these responsibilities necessary to protect the rights that we wish to have as individuals. It's simple, you know, pleases and thank-yous, and what can I do for you, and little less, maybe, I, me, and what have you done for me lately. Treat those, of course, as you wish to be treated. I mean, we all learned those in kindergarten and first grade, and I think we need to try to strive for more of that. We're bombarded with challenges to these attempts to live free and respect each other. You turn on the television, and Jerry Springer has the most incredible topics that anyone can imagine. Judge Judy is rude and obnoxious, and Judge Wapner now is adjudicating the rights of animals. And so, you look at some of the things around us, we're always challenged to rise up and try to get above the fray, for lack of better words, and I think it really should begin at home, and it should be some goal that we all need to approach. And I think that dialogue such as this is really critical to remind us what a fantastic country we live in, but with these freedoms and rights certainly comes some responsibilities towards one another in the form of respect. And if we can strive for this respectful attitude towards one another, we certainly can achieve a common goal of a successful, prosperous community. And thanks for having me.
Donald Dodd is with the DA's office, and the judges set quite a pace for him by mentioning both Jerry Springer and the Constitution in the same introduction, so take it away.
Thank you very much. I will stand in the presence of two judges. I'm a trial assistant DA, and I've learned to stand in front of judges. I'll say thank you very much for having me. I was thinking about what to talk to you folks about, and what I want to talk about is this: in this very room, we have a code of conduct. The code of conduct is defined by something called the New York State Penal Law. I'm an assistant DA. Our responsibility is to enforce and cause to be enforced the laws of the state of New York, principally the penal law. That code of conduct prohibits certain things. That code of conduct, under certain circumstances, requires each of you to do certain things. We all get a benefit from that code of conduct. The benefit is the right to be free from somebody else doing something stupid or wrong to us or our kids, or something in the school. With the benefit, however, comes a responsibility: the responsibility to actively take steps to make sure that if somebody else is breaking the code, that we get plugged in. We do something. We don't sit back passively and say, "It's somebody else's problem, somebody else can worry about it." We have to be involved, to be responsible, to ensure that we all get the benefit. I'll make that concrete. Things happen in this school, in our office, in the DA's office. We are keenly aware of what happens in schools. We appear in front of both of these judges, and have had the privilege of doing it on numerous occasions. When we think about what happens in schools: kid brings a gun to a school, kid comes to school and winds up in a fight with another kid, kid comes to school and winds up with a fight with a teacher. The conduct has consequences. The consequences will be measured by the things that are done by way of who reports it, the investigation by the police, and then ultimately, if a person's over age 16, it becomes an adult matter. Judge Roman handles matters that are 16 and less. Under certain circumstances, a person 13, 14, 15 can boot it up, can be booted up to adult court and will be involved in it. We're keenly aware of what happens here, because what happens here, in terms of how kids learn to relate to other kids and adults, sets the tone for what's going to happen later on in life. If they start right, the chances are they're going to wind up right. Unfortunately, what I see are people that turn into 22, 24, 25, 27, that for whatever the reason, just never got it right in terms of the conduct, and we perpetually see them coming back into criminal court, and then the consequences get more severe. Instead of a probation officer, as Mr. Richmond is down here, he'll talk to you a little bit about that, where they try and shove them in the right direction, probation doesn't work, and then the options that the good judges have available become fewer and fewer, it becomes punitive. Hey, look, if you can't learn, we're going to put you in the Iron Bar Hotel, and let's see if you like it there. I look forward to your questions, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Lynch works with the students and the children we're talking about here every day in the Fulton City School Districts. Bill?
Thank you. On behalf of the task force and our school district, I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. I have provided some handouts of some of our Board of Education policies that relate to this topic, and they're on the table by the door, so if you didn't get some, please take some either during this evening or at the end of the evening. A school district in each of our schools is essentially a community, and each of the community, in our schools, are really a part of the greater Fulton, Volney, and Granby communities. And as a community, in order to function effectively, as all of us know, we have to have expectations that are common, we have to have rules, norms for behavior, that really set the expectations, and as some of the other speakers tonight said, the tone and the norm for what happens in meetings or in public places. Common expectations allow us to work collectively together: our students, our teachers, our parents, our administrators. And our mission, which is to educate all students: the vast majority of our students who do what's expected, achieve well in school, and are moving well on the path to be productive citizens, and also to educate those students who struggle, whether it's educationally or behaviorally. We recognize that for large groups to live and work and play together, that they need to have these common rules to follow. A school district really operates on rules that are set from three different directions that are very common and play together. One are the Commissioners' Regulations from the Commissioner of Education in New York State, Education Laws the Second, and the third are our Local Board of Education Policies, which really provides an element of local control, the local touch and tone that really defines what our schools and our community and our school district is. And each of our board members work together to review our policies, to listen to public input, to listen to input of our staff and our students, and to make those policies really what we want, to set the tone for really what our schools to be. All of these policies and procedures really provide some simple things. One is for students to be able to come to school and be safe and secure and be able to learn, for our teachers to be able to teach, and for parents to know when they send their children off to school, that they're going to be a safe and secure environment, and that they will get an education. And the procedures really allow us to implement these things, set the expectations, and to respond to situations that may occur in a very common manner that's consistent with everyone's individual rights and responsibilities, which are identified in our state and public As situations occur, the policies that our board set up really provides the guidance in terms of how we're going to respond to those. These are identified in student handbooks, which are distributed to each one of our students and sent home in September of each year, and it really then is our means of being able to communicate with our parents as to how we operate and what we see as our responsibility, but also what we see as the families' and the parents' responsibilities. And if we work together, we will be productive in meeting the needs of your children and our students. I look forward to later to have an opportunity to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Okay, Bill, thank you very much. Two more panelists to go, and then we do get to those questions, so if you have one or if you're thinking of one, you want to write it down, think about it some more, we're going to get to those very quickly, because that really is the heart of tonight's forum. Up next, Richard Mitchell, who is with the Oswego County Attorney's Office.
Thank you. I'll try and address my remarks this evening to the role of the county and what our office and other county agencies play in both the court system and outside the court system. Both parents and juveniles or children have rights, there's no question about that. How they exert those rights in any given forum has drastic implications on the family unit, on the school system, and on relationships in general. We've heard that penal law is a code by which we all live by, and that's true, we're a nation of laws. Schools have codes of conduct, families even have rules. But the penal law and the school system is not a surrogate for a good family unit and a good home. And we see so many children that get into trouble with the law, or end up with severe emotional or other problems because of the lack of a solid role model, the lack of a solid family unit, a lack of structure in their lives. The state, from hundreds of years back, has had the notion that it will step in and take over where the family cannot, and the notion is called "parents patrie." It's a role of the state to come in where a child's parents die, where a child's parents lose parental rights, and things of that nature. And that manifests itself primarily in family court, sometimes in surrogates' court as well. You, as a parent, have a right to commence a proceeding against your child. It's called a "person in need of supervision" proceeding. I personally believe that parents who do that are taking a courageous step, but they're parents that are involved in their child's well-being. It's a child that's beyond lawful control, incorrigible, truant, things of that nature. Schools can commence that proceeding, the police can also commence that proceeding. We typically see in our office and in the family court attorney's office juvenile delinquency proceedings. Those are children who are between the ages of seven and, under the age of 16, who have committed offenses which, committed by an adult, would constitute felony or misdemeanor. There are certain types of JD proceedings that are designated felonies, under which our office and the district attorney's office share concurrent jurisdiction. Your child can move out of your house at the age of 16 and sue you for support, bring you to court for support, even though you cannot make your child move back into your house or make your child go to school. You are legally obligated, under recently enacted legislation, for restitution for bomb threats, under the General Obligations Law. That can be up to $5,000. You are obligated, as a parent, provided you have sufficient resources, there are defenses to both of these things, family's ability to pay. There's a shopkeeper's rule under the General Obligations Law that would allow a shopkeeper to sue the child and have the parent be responsible for up to five times the value of an item, not to exceed $500, even if the item is returned. If your child is placed in foster care, the county can come after you for portions of that cost of the foster care placement. There are all sorts of interesting things that come into play when you give your child your car, child drinks alcohol, or gets into some sort of accident, that can also have certain implications. We, as a county, have to step in certain times where parents are abusing or neglecting their children, and in those instances, parents may lose their rights to have children in their home for a short period of time or permanently. And those are very serious cases, they come before the court, the DSS is typically involved in their legal counsel, and the district attorney's office is typically involved. It's a two-way street. Children do have rights, parents have rights, and it's a balancing. I personally believe that children are becoming more aware of their rights to some extent, even though they may not be as astute as to the full implications of those rights. They may know through the schools that they don't have to go to school after 16, or they can move out at the age of 16, there's nothing their parents can do, because they've seen children in the senior year do this, or junior year do this in their school. I would like to echo Judge Roman's comment that family court is an open court. If you think that you are living in a cocoon and school is as safe as your home, or your community is as insulated as your home, all you need to do is talk to Judge Roman, or Chief Spahn, or anyone in our office. We have juveniles in this county committing any number of different offenses. We have juveniles in this county committing any number of different offenses, juvenile delinquency offenses, ranging from burglaries to weapons offenses to bomb threats, stealing cars, drugs, you name it. And all you have to do is spend a day or two in family court to see the range of the involvement of some of those kids. So all I have to, I'll close in saying, know who your children are involved with, know where your children are when they're out in the evenings, because that's typically where they seem to get in trouble the most. Thank you.
Finally, before we get to your questions, we have Michael Richmond, who is a probation officer with the Oswego County Probation Department.
Great, thanks. I'm like Don, I'm used to standing up in the presence of judges and making presentations, so bear with me. Also, as a juvenile officer, I'm used to moving around because I have to chase kids all over the county, so bear with me. When I started probation as a probation officer about ten years ago, my supervisor at the time asked me, as part of my training, to write down a little summary, a little capsule of what I thought probation was going to be. I dug that out, and I was like one of the judges here and digging up some things to say, and I wanted to read it because I thought that it really is apropos, and it says this: "Probation for juveniles is not a punishment," although many of it view it that way. "Probation for a juvenile in its purest sense is an attempt to provide a stable role model that has the court's direction to supervise court ordered rules and regulations, as well as the ability to sanction the respondent with consequences for broken rules and regulations. In addition, probation can serve as a brokerage house, helping to couple together the services that may be needed to help the juvenile mature properly." When I started this job about ten years ago, some of the oldies that had been around a while told me, they said, "Mike, you're going to find out real quickly, you're going to see family names that have been in the system for generations." And I kind of brushed it off because I wanted to let everybody start on an even keel, but sure enough, in the first couple of years, I began to see that. I'd see names that had come through the system, and their father had come through, or their mother had, or grandmother, grandpa. But the thing that I've seen most recently, which has really troubled me, is that that has really changed. We do still see some of that, but we're seeing kids now that are from not only middle-class homes, but upper-class homes. Names that never were in the police file before, kids that you never, ever would have dreamed being involved in some of the things that they're involved with. I have to also say, I'm a parent. I have two kids, they both are out of high school now, one's in the military, and one is on her way to India as a missionary. But one of those kids broke my heart and put me through some times that you guys probably can relate to as parents. So even as a probation officer, I wasn't immune from some of the situations that go on with our children. And I'm very encouraged by the group that's gathered here tonight, the fact that you all are coming and you're saying, "Hey, I want to see the bar raised up. I want to see the level of maturity, I want to see the level of rules and regulations and society kind of get back to some of the things that even our founding fathers talked about." And there's a tremendous need for that. We're moving further and further and further and further away from how things were initially situated. And as a probation officer, I kind of rightfully am at the end of the table because I'm the guy that they've got to deal with after they come through all the rest of the system here. I'm the one that tries to provide the stable role model. By whatever rules Judge Roman or whichever judge happens to be, the child is in front of, gives me a list of rules, and it's my job to kind of make sure that they follow those to the best of their abilities. You've already heard terms like "PENS" and "J.D.," juvenile delinquents, or kids that break the law, that if you were I-broke, we could possibly go to jail. PENS are kids that are breaking rules. They're not necessarily laws, but they're rules, like going to school, which happens to be a law, but it's not one that's a criminal one if you break, but not following parents' curfews, those kind of things. So I'm encouraged, and I want you to be encouraged. The fact that you're here means you're trying to take control back, you're trying to say, "Hey, I want to be more involved in what's going on." You are, so I applaud the fact you're here, and I thank you for allowing me to be here to represent probation.
Thank you, Mike. My last name wasn't one of the names that had creeped onto that list that you were talking about, I didn't... Okay. As long as Mike brought up rules, why don't we go over a couple here quickly before we get to your questions? The most important one, to be honest with you, as far as a ground rule goes, is no names. Please, no specific names, especially with regard to juvenile cases. There's a right to privacy that we need to maintain this evening, so really, when you ask questions, the way this is going to work the best is if you phrase those questions hypothetically and ask questions like that. And I'm sure we can do that. Another rule I'd like to set actually for our panelists, just so we get as many questions in as possible here, is that we limit responses to about ninety seconds. That's quick, but I think you can get the gist out of what you want to say inside of ninety seconds, especially if there's going to be a couple people who answer any one question. As for your rules out there, other than that no names thing, it's pretty much a free-for-all, in a verbal sense at least, not a physical sense. It's just a form on violence, I don't know why I said that. So with that, oh, and we also can't disparage Coca-Cola. Why don't we get started? Does anybody have a question? Let me, what I'm going to do is bring the microphone around to people who have those questions, I'll get to you in just a minute, so you can speak up and be heard, we are taping this. Why don't you stand up, give us your name, and...
Oh, I can try.
Okay, that's okay. Stay right there, no, that's okay.
I'll probably stutter too.
Sure.
But I got a question. Okay, so if I teach my son Nicholas, oh, sorry. It's a habit, it's a habit. But anyways, I teach him how to drive, and I show him all the rules and the regulations in the driving, "Don't do this, don't do that, don't drink and drive, especially because you might not be able to drive very much," you know, stuff like that, and he does it anyways. Now, I don't understand that. If he does it anyways, then you're going to be coming back at me and telling me that I didn't teach him right. Now, I don't understand this. Whoever come up with that rule, I don't understand. I understand that if I didn't teach him, and I didn't want to, and I told him to go do it, then I would understand. But if I told him not to do it, and begged him not to do it, then what is the, what is the, what is it? I'm confused. And anything else? If I had a gun in the house, and he's, I understand it's got to be locked, yes, I undergr... you know, permanent, it's permanent. But things we've got to teach our kids, if I teach him right, and he does it anyways, that's my question.
Well, if, from a Fulton City point of view, it depends on his age. If his age is above sixteen, he will be treated as an adult. There are some, you mentioned driving while intoxicated potentially or what have you, there are certain rules with respect to those youth that are found guilty, either after their admission of guilt or after trial, that there are certain additional sanctions, namely license revocations, that might generally occur. The only time in Fulton City Court that an issue of your responsibility may come up is with respect to the assigned counsel program. And the attempt of the assigned counsel program, it gets difficult at times, but is to attempt to have the parents of the child assist in the payment of the services of the attorney. When all bets are off, though, the policy of Fulton City Court is to assign, if the child or young person is unable to afford a lawyer, a lawyer is given to them at the cost of the county. So that person would be treated as an adult, and there wouldn't necessarily be a sanction against you as to how you may have taught that particular person as to how to drive.
I do want to ask Judge Roman about that as well, because he does work in family court. A parent who says, "Look, I've taught my kid the best I can, I've shown him what to do, I've told him what to do, and yet he still does something else, where do I go from there?"
Let me anticipate that question and answer, and broaden upon this gentleman's inquiry as to the possible DWI. Let's use the hypothetical of a bomb threat, and the good parent who has said and tried to teach their son or daughter that that's wrong, and it can't happen, and that there are serious consequences. I think the state legislature envisioned this type situation and didn't think that people, that parents, were in general taking enough responsibility to keep these type situations from happening. And as a result, the General Obligations Law, and I could quote to you the section, chapter, and verse, but that's not important right now, was amended last year to put more of the responsibility on the parents, so that if that happens, then the parents can in fact be held responsible for restitution or for the damages to property, personal or real property, to the extent of $5,000. It used to be that the maximum cap was $2,500 for intentional torts, but this law was specifically broadened last year, and now it's up to $5,000. But there are defenses to that, just as Mr. Mitchell made reference to. If the court has a hearing and hears sufficient mitigating circumstances as to what the parents have tried to do to deflect or to prevent those occurrences in the first instance, then it's within the court's inherent discretion to reduce that $5,000 cap all the way down to $500. So that you can take it on a case-by-case basis and look at what the parents have done, what have they tried to do, or what have they failed to do, and then the court determines what's appropriate on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, Judge, thanks. Let me, before you get a follow-up, let me make sure nobody else has questions here, because are there any other questions around here? Sure, I'll try to get back to you, but I do want to get as many in as possible. Sure.
Sir, you have, I heard you say that you have, that children have a right to be safe when they're in school. I don't see how that's possible all the time, because what I'm seeing in my school alone is all the violence, all the threats. From a personal point of view, I don't think my school is any safer than anybody else's. The people in my school make threats to each other every day, which aren't reported. People get beaten up every day, and they don't report it. Sometimes things will happen and no one will do anything about it. And I don't see the point of that. I don't see the, the best logical way I can see as to how to keep someone safe is to have them homeschooled and not interact with this kind of social interaction. What I see is that I, I'm not sure, but I don't think the schools are all that safe.
You raise a lot of, a number of different concerns, there's no question. Some of the things that you mentioned obviously trouble me, I think they trouble parents sitting in the room as well as staff in the school. I think if students feel threatened or are threatened, that there's recourses or ways to try to deal with that in the school, in terms of either telling adults in the school, whether it's the teachers, or going to the administrators, and informing your parents. If things like that continue, then your parents need to come in and meet with either the teachers or the school administrators about that. There are many parents who have made a choice to homeschool their children, that you mentioned. That is a choice of any parent to do. It's a very serious choice because it does provide some opportunities, but it also provides, in some other ways, some limitations to opportunities that students can get within a broader environment like a school district. So we do our best, we take the very serious responsibility of having students be safe. We constantly work at it, it's something that we don't take for granted, and we look for every opportunity to do a better job than we, a better job every day than we've done the day before. So if you have specific instances, I'd encourage you to talk to, talk to your teacher, or have your parents come in and talk to the school administrators.
Follow-up to what you're saying. When I heard you say that, the first thing that came to mind is, people tolerate other people doing stuff wrong, and it just, we get used to tolerating it. Well, this kid's doing something wrong, but nothing's happening. This person's doing something wrong, but nothing's happening. And we get used to tolerating people doing things wrong, and that creates an environment where we feel, you know, there's so much going wrong, it's not safe here. Part of the responsibility that comes to mind is if someone's doing wrong, bring it to somebody's attention. The only way corrective action starts, ever, is when someone discloses it or says, "Hey, this isn't right." And then this fellow could get plugged involved, probation officer could get plugged involved, the chief of police could get plugged involved, and other people react to it, but it starts with someone saying, "Not going to tolerate it, it's not right, we should do something about it."
Okay. Anybody else, question? Yeah, we have one over here. If we can pass this microphone down the line here, kind of like passing a hot dog.
Hello, I would like to quote him, "I don't think the schools are safe because like if someone's going to fight, and then you just suspend them, then they're going to come back and they're just going to do it over and over again, and it really doesn't matter." So how can you prevent that from happening?
We're talking there about, in essence, repeat offenders. I mean, we're not talking about the criminal justice system in a sense, but you're talking about the school district. And my microphone is repeatedly giving me problems. Who wants to take a shot at that one?
Well, I would echo the previous answer that this should be reported, it should be reported promptly and every time it happens. Administration in schools cannot be imagined to know everything that goes on in every classroom and hallway in this building. And it takes some courage to go for it, you may be threatened to do that, but there's no way we can get this matter before the courts, or before the police, or before the superintendent unless someone reports it. And that's where it's the responsibility of the student or the parent who is approached by their son or daughter to report this information to the appropriate authority.
And just to follow up briefly, obviously, to report it, we don't know everything that happens in the schools. All the time, students communicate with each other, and the adults don't know, and sometimes we think everybody, people know what we experience, and that's not always the case. If you're aware that something's going to happen, you can tell, or other students can tell the teachers or the administrators that it's going to happen so they can be prepared and try to deal with it. Students, there are consequences for students' behavior based upon both the seriousness of what occurs and the frequency of things that happen. If a student is a repeat offender for things like that, then the consequences can become more progressive. Students who are not going to follow our rules are not going to stay in the school context. I mean, in terms of fighting and threatening other students. We have students removed from school for that type of behavior, not a short-term suspension, they're removed for the rest of the school year, or for a period of time, and they come back with some, with some expectations that if the behavior doesn't improve, they don't stay. And that's the way the system's laid out, and we try to administer it as fairly as we can.
Bill, how often does that happen, and how tough is it to make a choice to say, "Look, it's gotten to the point where normal discipline isn't working, we've suspended this student, even maybe expelled the student for a time being, they're not going to go to school in this district anymore at all."
Okay. Well, through the superintendent, a student can be removed from school for one school year, that's the basis of it, for a calendar year. It happens, I don't have a number easily to tell you how often it happens. It does happen frequently during the year that we have to basically say, students come to the superintendent through an administrative hearing from the building principal, and typically, we involve other agencies. We will involve, an assault situation, the police can be involved in those situations, law enforcement. We will utilize family court for students who aren't following our rules, we will make a petition to family court and hope to involve the probation department or other community agencies. We also look at whether the educational setting that students who are having difficulty behaving in that social environment, whether that's the right environment for them. And our professional staff looks at that in terms of both special education needs or whether they need an alternative setting that's going to be more appropriate for their needs. So there's a variety of ways that we try to address those complex situations. But ultimately, if a student doesn't follow the rules and is a threat to other students, there are actions that are taken to remove them from the setting.
I think Judge Roman wanted to say something about this judgment, we need to be quick, though.
I wanted to just take a second to emphasize some of the practical limitations and why I believe this type forum is such a wonderful opportunity for the community. I took the time to go through the computer this afternoon just to see how many cases have we had in family court of juvenile delinquency and of persons in need of supervision, just for the first three months of this year. Now, this is only juvenile delinquency and persons in need of supervision, but believe it or not, for the first three months... But believe it or not, for the first three months, just here in a relatively small county, we've had 87 new PINS cases and 156 juvenile delinquents. That's 243 new cases just since the first of the year involving kids under 16. And we're just completely inundated. The system is swamped. We don't have the luxury of the out-of-home and out-of-community placements that we need. It's terribly costly to have these children placed outside of the homes and outside of the community, not to mention the emotional impact on the family and the trauma to the kids involved. And that's why we need more of a collaborative, community, preventive approach to work with difficult situations and keep the kids in the home, in the community, in the school before they reach crisis proportions and end up in court.
Because the system is so swamped, before we get to our next question, I want to bring Mike Richmond into this really quickly because he's the only one we haven't heard from. Mike, if we're going to change one thing about the system, quotation marks, and the way we deal with these children, what would you do differently?
That's a $64,000 question. I think the judge hit it on the head. We need to see more programs coming out, and that's why I said I was excited about being here tonight, because you are people that are saying, hey, we want to grab back hold of this car that's careening crazily down the road. To see more community interaction, to see more projects, and I don't know if that's necessarily the right word, but where we are encouraging this kind of dialogue and encouraging people to get together, to work together, to work out differences, and with the goal being to better the community. One of my probationers, as a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, that was, he's on probation for rape, looked at me, and we were talking about another rape that had taken place within the last month, and he happened to be at the, wanted, he was at that place and had left the place before the rape took place. And I was telling him how lucky he was, because if he'd been there for the second rape, he would be a goner as far as kids are concerned. And he looked at me and he said, what gives you the right to tell me what my friends and I can and can't do? Now technically, by the law, he was charged with rape, but in his mind and the other people's minds that were involved, it was a consensual act. But the law is very specific about alcohol being used in minors and so on and so forth. So he was technically charged, technically convicted. But the thing that struck home to me was, scientists tell us we've got a perceptual screen, the way we look at things, everything that we hear, see, say, comes through this screen. It's an invisible thing, we don't, it's not really a screen, but things come through that. And what I realized was, I and everybody on this panel and most of the people here in this room, look at things through a screen of rights and wrongs, rules and regulations, because that's the generation most of us have grown up in. Unfortunately, many of the younger generation, kids in high school, kids in middle school, many of them never had someone say, there are rules and regulations, there are rights and wrongs, because our society, and I'm a product of that, you know, I was involved in the 60s and the 70s when we were saying, throw out the rules, to heck with the rules, you know, we're not going to follow what the establishment's saying. And now we have kids, and many of us didn't give those rules to our kids because we didn't endorse them ourselves. And now the chickens are coming home to roost. Now the kids are looking at us and they're going, who are you to tell me? And what we've got to do is kind of back up the bus and say, wait a minute, we made some mistakes, there are rights and wrongs, there are rules and regulations, there are absolutes, and we wanted the best of our ability, kind of had a community-wide repentance of saying, hey, we've got to start fresh here, we've got to kind of say, okay, whoop, hold the bus, let's get back on track here. So to answer the question, I think that's one of the things, is we've got to say, yeah, there are rules, there is right and wrong, there is black and white, and not accuse people of being judgmental when they say, hey, this is wrong, or hey, this is right, this is good behavior, this is negative behavior. Hopefully, the attitude in some of our young people will change, and they won't say, who are you to say that? They'll say, oh yeah, okay, I realize what I did was wrong.
Who's next? Jerry, we're going to get to you before things are over, don't worry. Oh, there you go.
Judge Roman, you pay attention, I'm senior, I'm senior civil state, I'm a justice major. And I believe in rehabilitation, I believe in, I believe in, I believe in, how do you convince people that every time you get called on the bottom floor, you don't take it in front of First Street, you hang it from the flagpole, but we try to do the same thing? How do you get journalists by to accept rehabilitation and constructive punishment? To second, and I say, everybody, you do wrong, push them down, now it's my kid, let's give them their, your kid, put them away. How do any of you see changing society's attitude?
Well, first of all, in juvenile cases, the identity of the children that are involved is confidential and is largely protected. And when you saw the situation go on last year with the 12, 13, 14 cases involving Fulton School District, Fulton Youth, you didn't see the names of those children involved. They weren't labeled, they weren't going about the community wearing a scarlet letter. What we tried to do is point them in the right direction, try to get them hooked up with different counseling programs, try to get them hooked up with different community service organizations, and actually work off their debt to society, so to speak. Every one of those type situations, there were consequences. And when I talk about having the goal be rehabilitative, when it becomes a situation where the public welfare or the public domain is threatened, then the actions that we have to take in family court are not simply rehabilitative, they become punitive in nature. And when we have situations of recidivism, and that's the reality, that we have a lot of recidivism, when they come back through the system the second time or possibly the third time, if not the fourth or fifth, then certainly we have to sometimes abandon the goal of rehabilitation and largely deal with the situation more harshly and punitive in nature to set an example that other youth become aware of so that it tends to deflect that type behavior in others.
Okay, we talked about the community getting involved, and a perfect example of that is somebody who's going to ask our next question here. Jerry Hogan really got the task force started here in Fulton. Jerry, why don't I, can I pull you up over here so everybody can see who you are, for those who haven't met you before? I think she has a question.
I did take advantage and go down to family court one day, and it was quite an eye-opener. My heart hurts when I left. But I guess my question is, these were kids for the PINS. And I sat there and wondered, you're getting these kids help, what about the parents that are there? Is that out of your jurisdiction, or can you get them counseling or some help at the same time?
That's a very good question, and I've been involved with the statewide Judges Association for years, and we have lobbied the state to literally change the law and have the person in need of supervision category substituted with a new label, family in need of services. But the state has not seen fit to adopt that type proposal. So in family court, we are in fact a court of limited jurisdiction, and when we have the youths in front of us, I can't specifically order the parents to do too much unless the parents have separately been brought into court on a neglect or abuse situation. When that happens, we certainly end up ordering all kinds of different programs and counseling services and parenting assessments and alcohol and drug screening and things of that, things of that nature. But on the PINS cases, we have to try to cultivate a working relationship with the parents and get them to agree to do many of these services on a voluntary basis at county expense. And I think for the most part, we are able, once we're able to get over the mistrust from many parents who are fearful of the system, once we're able to do that and establish a working relationship, I've found that most parents are receptive and will do whatever it takes to maintain their family structure and keep the kids in their home.
Follow-up to that particular comment, both of these judges, when someone comes before them and there's a finding of responsibility or admission of guilt, both of the judges are limited to what the statute authorizes them to do in terms of consequence. Because what you're talking about is the consequence. What's it going to be, how much of a price? And both the judges here have to play by the cards that are dealt to them, and the frustration is that sometimes what happens is, to try and correct the situation that gave rise to the conduct of the person, they want to reach into the family, because that's where it starts. I mean, that's where it starts. They want to reach into the family to try and tweak that, to push people in the right direction there, but sometimes they're limited because they cannot do that. You however, have a great advantage. Everyone here who has a kid or children have the advantage to be able to make those rules apply at home, so that if someone breaks one of the rules, there's a consequence within the family. That's the best structure, absolutely. These folks deal with after the fact, someone's gotten to a certain level. I've broken the penal law, now I have to go into Spencer Luddington's court, I'm an adult. I violated the penal law, but I'm under 16. I've got to go into Judge Roman's court because I'm a juvenile delinquent. It gets to a certain level, but doesn't start there. It usually starts before. Most of the time, we see a number of things that give rise to the conduct that winds up where people come in front of both these judges, and they're limited. I'll tell you, as an assistant DA, they don't have magic balls, they can't, can't crystal balls and gaze into it, they can only do what the law allows them to. And a lot of times, folks don't realize the limitations they work under.
Not to diminish what all of our panelists do up here tonight, but I think I heard a little bit of that, what the assistant DA was saying was that by the time any case gets up to this level, it's already gone too far. Who's next? We already got you, and I want to make sure we get as many as possible.
Hi, I'm a parent of three and a grandmother, okay? The law states at 16, they can run away from home. And I've gone through the system, been on the phone, been on the Capitol steps with tough love, okay? They have stated that, and the court system says at 16, they can leave, parents are still responsible. As a parent, I disagree with that law. They leave home at 16, let them defend for themselves. Because if they want to leave home, they're thinking they're adults in New York State? No, and then they can leave, you know, quit school at 16. You know, you get phone calls day after day, hey, where's your child? How would I know? She ran away. The point is, if parents don't have protection of their own children, because the laws won't protect our parents' rights, who's going to protect us? Parents are people too, just like children are. Children have rights, but as a parent, parents have a lot more rights than the kids do. And the kids overrule parents in today's law. I see the dime a dozen. My daughter ran out through her window with $65 and her clothes on her back. Two years now, she came back home with a baby. The law states, I've got to support her. I have a grandchild, I have to support her now because they're back in my home. As a parent, I don't feel that's right. So what do we do next? She's been on probation, she's been through that deal, she got off for probation before she turned 16, four days before. I told the probation office, oh, that's a big act she's putting on for you. Oh no, it's not. She got off, 16, told the school off in Mexico, the school kept calling me. I told them, call the courts, call somebody who cares. My hands were tied at 16. I went from place to place, told them, do not enable my child. You know what the parent said? You need to support her while she lives in my home. I said, not me, you keep her there then. If you think I'm going to support her as a parent, wrong. Send her home, kick her out, let her live on the streets for a day or two. But you know what they told me, the cops? I've had the cops at my house day after day. You know what they told me? You need to support her. Is that really true, is my law?
There has been a little bit of movement on this with regard to legislature, has there not?
Yes, there has. There was a article in this week's New York Law Journal, a bill has been introduced in Albany that would, if passed and signed by the governor, increase the age for persons in need of supervision to the age of 18. It's presently at 16, and that's sometime down the road, I would imagine.
Let's be realistic. That law has been proposed every year for the last 20 years, and it is probably the last thing that will ever be adopted by the legislature, because the practical limitations are such that if the system is inundated right now, it's swamped with kids who are less than 16, and I would predict right now, you won't see that change, even though the consensus across the board is that it should certainly be raised to 18. But it's not realistic to think that's going to happen. So to answer your question, what I would suggest without talking about specific cases is that that situation didn't arise overnight, and that situation probably was well-known and anticipated prior to that child's 16th birthday. So when, the lesson to be learned is that when parents see this happening and can tell that intervention is necessary, you've got to approach the court and the service providers far enough in advance of that 16th birthday so that we can get a handle on the situation and take the action that is necessary, before they become 16 and unwed teenage parents outside of their parents' control.
Something that speaks to that, what a parent can do and what a parent should do, is another note I have written down here that I did want to ask, because we asked before, we talked about trying to tell your child what to do and then them not following it. But the note that I had written down here is, as a parent, the law says I can use force to discipline my child, but I fear being called in for child abuse. What's the answer and what are the options?
Well, I can tell you that a parent, a guardian, or a school teacher can use force that is reasonably necessary to maintain control or discipline. And there's a distinction, and I'm applying the penal law, and I would defer to Judge Roman, who certainly is familiar with and handles routinely instances of neglect or abuse. And I'm not going there, but under our law, a parent can use physical force that is reasonably necessary for the purposes of promoting welfare. In other words, if I as a parent feel that as part of my parenting, that corporal punishment is legitimate, some persons may not agree with that, some may, to the extent that I view that to be a legitimate form of parenting, the law recognizes that. You can use physical force for the purposes of parenting. Where the law draws the line in a criminal sense is that it cannot exceed the purpose. In other words, my intent is to harm someone, or annoy someone, or endanger someone, I've crossed the line. I've lost that justification that we have in the law, which is under Article 35 of the penal law, that justifies the use of physical force under certain circumstances. So I can parent, I can use force, but it must be measured by a responsible sense of the purpose and how much.
What about in schools?
In terms of a teacher?
Yeah.
Same thing applies for a teacher. Under the penal law, and that may be different from the policy, schools can adopt whatever policies they feel reflect the best attitude of the district that they serve. And I don't wish to speak to any particular board's policy, but the law says that a teacher certainly can use physical force for the purposes of ensuring that you're promoting the welfare of the children in the class or you're maintaining discipline. It cannot be excessive, it cannot exceed the necessity, it can't be to inflict punishment, but most certainly you can use it for the purposes of control. But there are people here that could address policy decisions as to whether or not a particular board wants to have a teacher do that.
Another question. Sure, let me give you the microphone.
I work with Mr. Richmond at the probation department, and I've been there for about 15 years. And I just want to say, when I first started my job, I was seeing kids that are 14 and 15 years old. Now we're starting to see kids that are eight and nine years old committing the same kinds of offenses. I think as a community, what we need to do is look at what we have for our kids to do here. Fulton is a small community, but honestly, there's not a lot of things for our kids to do if they're not in sports. And sports are a wonderful thing, and I think, you know, the majority of the kids I see, one of the first questions I ask them is, what kinds of things do you do outside of school? And the majority of the answer is, nothing. So I think as a community, we need to come together and figure out how we can keep our kids busy and happy. And not every kid is going to play a sport. So what other options can we come up with for our kids? Because honestly, I think the busier we keep our kids, the better our chances are that we're going to keep them out of trouble. And I mean, we live in a tough society right now. We have lots of working parents, moms and dads that work, parents that have to work evening shifts when they can't be home at night. I mean, lots of the parents that I deal with work like a 3 to 11 shift, and they're not home at night when their kids are home from home at night when their kids are home from school. That's a disaster waiting to happen. And we have to take control of this somehow. We have to figure out solutions. If we can't be home for our kids, then we need to come up with other viable options so that they're not unsupervised. So I guess I'm just saying, as a community, we need to start thinking about the kids that aren't going to play sports. What other kinds of things can we do to keep them busy and happy and supervised? Because I think that's really a big key. And we have to start seeing kids and getting into the schools at a younger age where we can start. We can't wait till they're 15 and a half and have them come to our office and say, "We've got problems." We need to start seeing these kids, and we are seeing them younger. But, you know, in the school district, you know, that's like the first red flag as to when things are starting to go crazy.
I remember when a guidance counselor said, when I was in high school, one of the guidance counselors I knew, and one of his expressions was, "The school day ends at 2:46 PM." And that's in high school at least. And he said, "Your school day's not over then, you know, Jeff. Get involved in sports, you know, do whatever else you can." And I tried to. God knows I wasn't the most involved person, but I think that's a very interesting point to that extent. You also brought up younger children. Are kids committing crimes, becoming criminal, committing violent crimes at younger and younger ages, or is that a misconception?
Crime is a misnomer.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, crime is a misnomer. The penal law and Article 3 of the Family Court Act would state that kids of 11 or whatever would not be that age, would not be criminally responsible. They commit offenses under Article 3 of the Family Court Act. There's a defense under the penal law and criminal procedure law of infancy. But we are seeing a trend in this county, reflective of statewide trends. My time with the Division for Youth, it's been increasing over past several years. The offenses are, the offenders are younger, the offenses are more varied, they're more serious. We're not seeing kids hitting mailboxes with baseball bats going to family court. We are seeing more serious offenses, felony offenses, in family court, ranging from sex offenses to larcenies to you name it.
Okay. One over here? Okay.
I would like to ask Judge Roman to speak to the youth in the courtroom. If they are facing, or to a youth, before they would enter your courtroom, what words of advice would you give to a youth that would be facing a PINS petition at this time?
You know, I had six children come to court today, and today was designated as Take Your Children to Work Day. And I brought six kids into my office this morning, and none of them were facing any charges. All of them were good students in their respective school systems. And I took about half an hour to speak with them, and frankly, I then took them out to lunch and had a wonderful opportunity to have a dialogue with them. And what I tried to do, the same thing that I would tell all the kids here tonight, is encourage them to take advantage of the opportunities to remain in school, to behave themselves, to stay out of trouble, to listen to their parents, to go to their teachers, or the administrators, or the guidance counselors with questions that they may have, and to get involved in activities. I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Davenport when she made the comment about keeping our kids tired. If we keep them busy and we keep them tired, frankly, they don't tend to get in as much trouble. And oftentimes, I tell kids that, and I mean it sincerely. You know, when we were all growing up as adults, and I'm not talking about the youth right now, but we routinely became involved in Cub Scouts at age seven. And we had our religious instruction lessons, and I'm not talking about the difference between church and state right now, but we had all kinds of activities as we were growing up, whether they were our swim lessons at the YMCA, or any other host of activities. But we had something that kept us busy almost daily, at least I know we did in my home, in my family, in my community. And I don't see enough of that now at the present time with the current generation. I think we need to get back to that so that we instill the proper values in our youth so that they don't have too much time, they don't have too much temptation on their hands, and they don't end up in trouble.
When I hear that, I wonder, doesn't every generation say that? I mean, back in my day, we did things differently. We did things better. And aren't these kids here going to say that about the next generation? I mean, are we really moving backwards? Judge?
I don't know that we're moving backwards, but I could tell you from a perspective just over the space of the last 12 years where we've come, not only in Oswego County, but across the state. In 1988, and that was the year before I became judge, we had a total caseload in family court for Oswego County of 3,500 cases. Now, that sounds like a tremendous number for a small county. In 1999, in Oswego County, with virtually the same population, we had a caseload of 7,200 cases. Now, what does that tell you? That there are problems, and there are issues that we're not adequately addressing and that we can obviously, as a society, do better on. That's why this type organization, this type community approach is so important. We need to do this, not just in Fulton. We need to do this across the county, in each community, and as a whole. I'm encouraged by this type thing. I think it's wonderful. And we need to get more people involved.
Judge Luddington, quickly, how's your case?
I'm a homegrown City of Fulton person, individual, and I'm incredibly encouraged by what's going on in Fulton. I think it looks so much better than it did when I was a young guy trying to figure out what's going on. And I'm optimistic, but we do have, we had, the last time we had statistics, we're becoming more litigious each and every year. Some 4,300 cases, small claims cases, criminal cases, commercial claims cases, traffic violations. And we are only a town of about 13,000. So the bad news is, it seems, more and more people are going through the system. And the courts are responding. We need to do better. We're becoming more user-friendly, and our chief administrative judge is now, we have a number of what are called treatment courts. And although, when I first heard of these attempts to improve the court system, I was quite negative about it, but there is now a movement to have drug courts. Those, we now have in Oswego County, a brand-new, about six or eight months-old, a drug court. And we also, in the state of New York, now have domestic violence courts. I think we really need alcohol treatment courts. And it's a response to perhaps what some might consider the failure of the court system to eliminate recidivism. And they're intensive court appearances. The defendants are held accountable each and every time they appear in court, and they're expected to make step-by-step progress in their particular case towards their particular rehabilitation, be it addressing a drug concern or a domestic violence concern. In Fulton, we now have a B Men program. It's an intensive domestic violence program. We have a thick book now in Fulton with all the resources that this county provides, and we try to utilize those in each and every case we possibly can because I may have the opportunity or the misfortune to send someone to jail, but I may not cure that particular ill. However, and we do it quite often, when if I have a young person appear in court, the first question I ask is, "Do you have a high school diploma?" If the answer is no, a condition of their release is to attend and complete the GED program. And if they don't comply, if they don't go, then there's potential sanction. And that's what courts are trying to do. We're trying to be more user-friendly and address these concerns. And so there's a, there's an approach, there's an attempt, and if there's a failure, there's an immediate sanction. And I think that if we can do that quickly and responsibly and responsibly, then perhaps we can eliminate this recidivism in these repeat offenders. And I'm very, very optimistic that the courts are being more in tune with what's going on in the villages and towns and cities. And I'm reasonably encouraged by the City of Fulton. We look great, we're trying, we've got a pile of problems, but we've got a lot of people that care. And so hopefully, that, this and this kind of dialogue will keep going, and it'll grow. And it'll be nice to come here in a few years and have 10 times as many people because we'd all be better off.
One more question, right up here.
I appreciate that you're all here tonight, but I have a couple of observations I'd like to make based on some things you have said. And it has to do with the litigation. And it's increasing. I want to tell you how shocked I was at a high school reunion some years ago when I learned just how many cases of abuse and rape that went on reported. It happened. Our generation was no different. It happened, but it wasn't talked about. And what we do do better today is we do talk to our kids to speak up and talk to adults. And yes, adults are responding to those needs. So we see these higher caseloads because we're encouraging people to talk about it, to deal with it. I'm not so sure that everything has to be litigated. Yes, it gets to you, your hands are tied. You're right. Every one of you said over and over tonight, "It has to start at home." But not only at home, it has to start in the neighborhood, in the community. Parents talking to parents, parents resolving problems between their kids, between families. Bringing it before a judge does not resolve the problem in a neighborhood. All it does is escalate the problem because now the lines of demarcation are drawn, and we just call and call and call and involve the court repeatedly. We don't encourage people to talk anymore. We encourage people in this society to talk through your attorney. You got an attorney? I'm getting an attorney. I'll pay more. Mine's going to be better than yours. I don't like what this judge says. I want to know if I can appeal. Because I'm going to continue talking through the law and attorneys until I get what I want. And the bottom line is, the kids see this, and the kids think the answer to everything is, "Well, I don't want to do what you want me to do, and has this poor woman suffered with her child? I'll be 16, and I'll get my own attorney. You don't have to provide it. The state's going to give it to me." And you go get an attorney because I'm going to have one from the state, and sure enough, the state's got to give me an attorney better than what you can afford to get to represent you. I hear it repeatedly. Talk to a lot of parents, good people, working very hard, with basically good kids who are troubled. And most of the kids that I know who run into trouble are in trouble because they don't fit. They're not the athlete. They don't fit there. They can't find something to do. There's lots to do. But we don't send kids out to play in the parks because we're also afraid, you know, to send kids down to the park. You get down to the park, you do something wrong, you're hauled off to jail, the police are at your door. We don't resolve things in the neighborhood. So yes, I applaud your efforts, but please ask people to start talking to one another because we're going to make a difference in the community. When we start acting like a community and you talk about the good old days, we didn't get away with anything because our parents talked to everybody else. And that's a big part of what's missing. We don't know our neighbors. We're all too busy. Thank you.
We're going to let the judges, the judges, I should say, the judges and all the panelists respond to that in a second because I think they probably agree with you more than you think on that point. I do want to bring in Jerry Hogan here one more time before we finish. Jerry, I'd like to have you say something, and it doesn't even have to be a question if it's a comment, because I said it before and I'll say it again, she really is the person who got this started. And so when everyone here talks about getting these programs started in these neighborhoods and with your neighbors and the people next door to you, this is it right here.
Well, I think what Robin said is right, and we seem to have lost our sense of community. And that troubles me a lot, and I'm just really grateful to see all of you here. And it's good to know also that we have people sitting on the panel who are dedicated to the community. And I just wonder if they have any thoughts where we could go from here. We have, we've talked about legislation, some legislative reforms. You've certainly given us a lot to think about. You say the raising the age to 18 isn't going to fly. That was one thing we had talked about. We've also talked about making the parents, or getting the parents help when their kids are in trouble too. But I wondered if you had any other ideas that might keep us going? We're going to keep going. We think it's a good thing to do, but if you have any additional ideas where we might go with this?
Something comes to mind immediately to me, and I listened to what you said, and I heard you say that people don't resolve things amongst themselves until it gets to a certain level, then cops get plugged in, we'll go to court, you have an attorney, I have an attorney. And, you know, I've said the exact same thing to people, which is if you don't solve the problem, a judge is going to solve it, solve the problem. And in Oswego County, we have services that are directly available through something called New Justice to Resolve, which is a mediation service where people, if they have conflicts, whatever it may be, my neighbor's dog is barking, I can call the cops, or I can go talk with them to see if I can settle it between us. If that doesn't work, we can find someone that doesn't involve the cops, doesn't involve the DA's office or the courts to see if we can solve the problem. So on a community basis, now there is something out there where you can try and work to resolve. But that's just part of it. Because the development part, which is what would prevent people in the community of Fulton to say that we're going to have a family support organization on the east side of the river and the west side of the river? Not government-sponsored, not DSS, not probation, not the DA's office, but just, hey, you know, we could get a few families together, and if someone's having a spot of trouble and they need to talk, they could come to us because then they move towards families within the community. And it doesn't get to where Judge Roman has identified and Judge Luddington. It gets to a point where something didn't happen right before, now it's up here. What do they do? I mean, it's immediately what comes to mind.
And again, it's worth mentioning, Jerry just mentioned to me, one of the things that's important before it gets to that stage is the peers of these children who potentially are getting into this activity that we don't want to see, reporting some of these things to make sure the school maybe, and somebody like Bill Lynch can take care of it, or even the parents can take care of it. As we wrap up here this evening, I do want to invite each of our panelists again to make a very brief comment about either, A, something that they heard tonight that struck them in particular, or B, respond to Jerry's question about what they'd like to see changed. And because we would like to get people out of here relatively quickly, I ask you to make those responses fairly brief. Bill, why don't we start with you at the end there?
Okay. I think very simply for parents to be involved with the school, to approach school personnel, to talk with the teachers, to get to know their child's teacher, to get to know their child's building principal, and to be accessible to the school and the school needs to talk to them. Robin mentioned community. A sense of community is crucial, and we need to work together. And when we communicate, we at least understand where each other is and what we need to do. As a former building principal, having the opportunity to talk with parents, our parent-teacher group meetings, I learned more in terms of what parents wanted our school to be for their children through, just through those conversations that we had and through encouraging them to be involved, I think we would have a much better school. So I think that that's what it's really all about if we really want to see our kids succeed.
Mr. Todd?
The likelihood of success is increased with a collaborative effort of people. The more people trying to pull the weight, identify the issues, the likelihood is that you're probably going to be more successful than if different people at different times get stuck with a situation, and what do I do now? And to the extent that Ms. Hogan follows up by saying, "Where do we go next?" Maybe there someday becomes community family support centers on the east side and the west side. And instead of winding up at the PD or in court, you go talk with someone that will try and help you.
Judge?
I would remind everyone that our challenge is that we are the adults, and we're the ones who have to set the proper example. We do that with each other, we do that with our children. We do that by keeping the lines of communication open. I always encourage people to leave court in a spirit of cooperation and compromise with some mutual civility and respect for each other, and try to work together. If we make our children our first priority, and their long-term best interests our focus, then there is no reason that we can't succeed.
Judge?
I can't remember the book, but there was some book, everything I know I learned in kindergarten. And it's something along the lines, you know, we say please, and we say... Say Thank You," and it's sort of from the ground up, and it's leading by example. And I think that character, and if we can lead, or attempt to lead as exemplary a life as possible, then there will be an aura where your neighbor will then also lead, or attempt to lead, that type of example. And I think our children are incredibly smart at an incredibly early age, and they see our interaction with our neighbors, and they see how we treat the store clerk, and they see how we treat the policeman that pulls us over because maybe we were going too fast. And all these things sort of add up to this corpus of a person in the form of a child. And I think that if we aggressively participate in our children's activities, and do whatever we can to, like the judge said, keep them busy and tired and active, and lead by example, and treat each other with respect, that we can improve the quality of all our lives. Groups like this, and conversations like this, dialogue, debate, arguments and differences maybe can be more easily resolved.
Mr. Mitchell?
I think organized activities, both in school, and parishes, and other community activities, serve to create positive environments for children. They allow children to pick up positive role models where those role models may be absent. Positive male role model or female role model may not be in the home, but they may be able to find a surrogate through organized activities. I would also suggest that parents be acutely aware of what their children are looking at on the internet, where they are in the evening, if they're going out, and they'll say they'll be back at midnight, ask where they're going to be, know where they're going and into whom's home they're going. We see, most of the offenses, we see children commit with other children. They get some idea in their head, and have idle time, and they'll break into a school, or they'll break into a church. And transware supervision is very, very important. It's not a perfect answer, but it's certainly worth trying.
Mr. Richmond?
As I already said, I think a lot of what we're talking about, really, we're saying, "Where do we go from here?", has to do with personal introspection, looking at ourselves, and just where we measure up, where we fall in short, and making some changes. Today, my wife opened up our email this morning, and we got this, and it's quite apropos, I think. It's called "The New School Prayer." It says, "Now I sit me down in school where praying is against the rule. For this great nation under God finds mention of Him very odd. In Scripture now the class recites, it violates the Bill of Rights. In any time my head I bow, becomes a federal matter now. Our hair can be purple, orange, or green; that's no offense, it's the freedom seen. The law is specific, the law is precise. Prayers spoken aloud are a serious vice. For praying in a public hall might offend someone with no faith at all. In silence alone we must meditate. God's name is prohibited by the state. We're allowed to cuss and dress like freaks, and pierce our noses, tongues, and cheeks. They've outlawed guns, but first the Bible. To quote the Good Book, makes me libel. We can elect a pregnant senior queen, and the unwed daddy our senior king. It's inappropriate to teach right and wrong. We're taught that such judgments do not belong. We can get our condoms and birth controls, study witchcraft, vampires, and totem poles, but the Ten Commandments are not allowed. It's scary here, I must confess. When chaos reigns, the schools a mess. So Lord, the silent plea I make, should I be shot, please, my soul to take."
There's a lot we didn't touch on here tonight, and I think that's okay, because we can go back and talk about this stuff with our colleagues, with the children, with peers, whoever else. There's a lot we haven't drained here tonight. We made it an hour and a half, I think, without even mentioning the internet, for that matter. There is a lot to mention as far as that goes. Let me offer at least just one observation. One of the big questions that comes up is, "Where do we go next? Where do we go from here?" And I heard somebody say something years ago, and they weren't talking about the exact same issues, but it really relates. And they said something that was, I thought, so simple yet extraordinary. You don't go anywhere from here, you don't go anywhere next. It all just comes back to you, you stay right where you are. I mean, ultimately, we're talking about responsibilities here, and the responsibility falls with you, with a parent, with a child, with a judge, with a prosecutor. And if everybody did their job, starting with them, we wouldn't have any of these problems. With that, let me thank our panelists for coming out tonight. We do appreciate your time, and I think you offered some great insights. Can we have a round of applause for our panelists, please? I also want to thank Chief Marcus Vaughn of the Fulton Police Department for putting this together and inviting me out to come. Chief, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.